Hi John.
Hey Julio, so what do you think so far?
It's really going excellent, yeah.
I think so, I think so. Carolina, you are just doing a wonderful, wonderful job.
Yes, and also, well, the program, basically how the sessions were organized, and basically, a great job, Karen, Julio, and Jared, because they coordinate the topic, the time, because whether they were, you know, and it's really, again, the sessions are put together in a very, very interesting way. Yeah, there is a lot of interaction.
No, absolutely. So Julio, I'm gonna put you on the spot. What is the best paper that you have seen so far? You're a Chicago economist, you can say that. We're notoriously rude, right?
Yeah, I think that there are, at least the session that I attended, the papers were, not only that were very good papers, but also the delivery of the papers were very, very well done, and with very good discussion, as I said.
Good, good.
You want me to put the D? No, I learned from you. I changed. I will give a short introduction.
Yeah, make it very short, make it very short.
Okay, and done. Okay, so, welcome everybody. Thank you again for being here. I am very glad to introduce John Lees, the scientific director of Jile. John is the Kenneth Griffin Distinctive Service Professor in Economics at the University of Chicago. He was chairman of the Department of Economics of the University of Chicago from 2012 to 2018. Prior to joining the University of Chicago, he was a professor at the University of Central Florida, the University of Arizona, and the University of Maryland. He served in the White House on the Council of Economic Adviser, and is a research associate at the MBA, and is a university fellow at Resources for the Future and at Tilburg University in Netherlands. He received his PhD in economics at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, and his PhD in economics at the University of Wyoming. So you are telling me to make it shorter, I will resume what I have. So John Lees has received many recognition, I will not go over it, because John asked me to be short, but clearly the place where he studied, I'm very proud of him. He received the distinguished alumnus award of both the University of Wyoming and Wisconsin Stevens Point, and also award for most outstanding graduate students in economics at Wyoming in two consecutive years. He received, among other prizes, the Arrow Prize for Senior Economics, the Kenneth Galway Award. John, and he received many honorary doctor's degrees. John Lees is a highly devoted professor. He has received awards in many years, for example, at the University of Central Florida. In 2013, he edited a handbook on experimental economics and environment together with Michael Price, and he's currently finishing a great textbook based on his graduate course on experimental economics at UChicago that will be a great resource for learning and teaching experimental economics. John Lees also provides many services to the profession. He's the editor of the Journal of Political Economy and the nonprofit and voluntary sector quarterly. He has been editor, co-editor, and associate editor in many journals, including Management Science, The Journal of Economics Perspective, and the American Economic Review. And he also has edited many journal special issues. He's an active organizer of meetings, including the advanced with Phil Experiment, and he gave more than 80 keynote speaks at conferences all around the world. And to finish, I will finish with this, I promised John about his research. The research of John Lees uses Phil Experiment to address both positive and normative issues across a wide range of issue. I consider that John is showing us that Phil Experiment is more than a tool. It is a different approach to economics that is complementary with economic approach. Working with Phil Experiment, is talking with organizations, visiting them, working in the field. In doing so, what was your original idea or theory or question is likely to change for the best. New ideas, new elements that did not seem important are likely to arise, so your understanding of the problem will improve. And to close, Jorge Luis Borges was a great Argentinian innovator in literature, a great Argentinian writer. About one of his most famous tales named "The Aleph", Borges said, and I quote, "What eternity is to time, the aleph is to space. In eternity, all time, past, present, or future, coexist simultaneously. In the aleph, the total sum of the spatial universe is to be found in a tiny shining sphere, barely over an inch across." John Lees has been carefully building an aleph in economics, developing and perfectioning Phil Experiment, which combined with his sound and clear economic analysis is providing a deep understanding in a wide range of issue. So John, we are eager to listen to you and learn more with your research.
Wow, wow, wow. I mean, you are, I wanna keep listening to you, not about me, but I'm learning from you. So that was, yeah, JB, JB gave you the heart, so that was incredibly kind of you. Thank you so much. It means a lot. And it means a lot that we've been able to partner for these years on Jile. It has been a really pursuit of love in a way, and it's been wonderful walking down the path with you. Now, you said a lot of things, and when you're, when you're able to do a lot of things, it's really because of two reasons. One, you're old, so I'm old. And, and two, more importantly, you have a good team. And you have a team of people who are dedicated and work hard to not only do great science, but also make economics better. And I think that's what Jile is trying to do. So the Jile team, thanks so much, and then the broader team as well. I wanna thank all of you, and I'll talk today a little bit about The Voltage Effect, which is my new popular book. But like I mentioned in the email, there's no reason for me to go through the formal book talk. Just go on YouTube or something, that people have been posting this, there's no reason for that. What I wanna do though, is I'm gonna start out the talk by using the typical book talk slides. So I've been doing enough of these talks now that everyone always tells me that their favorite part is the beauty contest game, which I do at the beginning. So I'm gonna do that right away again. Now, for better or worse, like I said, people feel that that's the best part of my talk, so maybe I should just stop then. But I'm then gonna wheel out maybe 10 slides to give you a feeling for why. I'm working on scaling, and these are really remnants of the Chicago Heights project in where that went. So that's like the formal book talk. And then, right around slide 11, I'm sort of gonna go into academic mode, and I'm gonna go down one path that we could open up from The Voltage Effect that hopefully will help you, and that will be along the lines of what I call the Typhon for experimental economists. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we can take on that Typhon, and what we can learn from The Voltage Effect about that, okay? And then how we can use the insights from The Voltage Effect to help us in our original designs, which I don't think we do enough of today, and I certainly have not done enough of in my career, okay? So I'm gonna try to finish in 45 minutes, so we can have 15 or so minutes of discussion. And when we open up to discussion, we should just have a give and take about where we can go, and I think there should be more and more of that and less and less of just straight out lecturing. So I'm gonna try to boulder through this by 9:00 AM Chicago time, and then I wanna, we can talk for 15 minutes or so about your questions. Okay. So as per usual, as I mentioned, we're gonna play the beauty contest game, and most of you know this game. I'm gonna set the range between 1 and 100 inclusive. Your job is to guess 2/3 of our group's average guess. This is an experiment, so I've probably done this 50 times now. I've given like 58 book talks, I've done this 50 times, so I have a wealth of data. As the story goes, as economists, we tend to use incentives. Your incentive today will be a signed copy of The Voltage Effect. I will inscribe it however you want, okay? Now with this group, I better get a lot of correct answers to this one. There's gonna be a form, that's a QR code, and that form's gonna say, "Welcome to the beauty contest game." Write down your email, write down your guess of what's 2/3 of the average, and then write down what you think is the equilibrium. We all know what an equilibrium is, so I don't have to explain it. Here's a QR code. So let's give it a go. Now, some of you, this is like the third or fourth time you've done this, right? Karen, you've probably done this three or four times. Julia, you too. So maybe you've learned, maybe you haven't. You for sure learned about the equilibrium. Okay, good, it's working. So fill those out. At the end, I'll announce the winners. We can talk a little bit about the beauty contest game. I'll just give you a moment to fill those out. And there's gonna be literally a man behind the curtain who will be analyzing your data as I'm giving the lecture. I'm texting him now, he's occasionally recalcitrant, so let me make sure he's behind the screen. Okay, Julio, Karen, and Julie, give me the thumbs up when you're good. Jared, you too, give me a thumbs up when you're done. Julia's done. Karen's done. Julio's trying to figure out the equilibrium, he got it wrong the first time. Now he's gonna revise and resubmit.
How I learn? I know that.
Even humans can learn a little bit, right? Julio, did you get your guess in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go then. Okay, very good, very good. Okay, let's talk, let's talk about the lecture now. The book is titled Voltage Effect: Why Do So Many Ideas Fail to Deliver Their Promise When Scaled? Now, when I first started doing work in this area, it was really an area of art. And it was both an area of art in the business world, where you had fake it till you make it, you had throw a bunch of spaghetti at the wall and cook what sticks, you had move fast and break things, but it was really all about the art of scaling. And what we've tried to do in the last several years in the academic literature is to add science. And this work has been with several co-authors, and I'll put some academic papers up in a moment. But we've been going after trying to add economics to scaling. Now traditionally, it feels like, and I'll talk about this in a few moments, that our field has sort of felt it's the pearls before swine. And I think that was an incorrect way to think about how to do research and how to change the world, okay? So my scaling road, it really started with a field experiment. And that field experiment took place in Chicago Heights. It started in 2008, when the Chicago Heights School District called me, and they said that they needed some help. And as we talked through the problems in the community, which the community is about 20 miles straight south of Chicago, and it's a community of about 40,000 or 50,000 people, maybe less now. Very poor community, roughly 93% of households are on food stamps. You have a lot of boarded up buildings, a lot of businesses have left. It was a manufacturing town, and manufacturing in the Midwest has not done well. Lots of households that are being foreclosed, and you know the whole story about the poor urban community, this is really Chicago Heights. So we talked about how I can help them, and we settled on if they are willing to open up their city to me, I will try to attract resources to bring in, and I'm gonna use their city as my lab. Okay, so the aspects that I'm gonna talk about here today is the preschool that I started with Roland Fryer and Steve Levitt. And this was a preschool, in America, in Illinois, you don't start formal schooling until kindergarten, or until you're six years old. So the idea here is, let's start a pre-K for three, four, and five-year-olds, and try to lessen the opportunity gap. Okay, so the idea was, explore theoretically aspects of the education production function, and create a curriculum that we could scale nationwide and worldwide, because we want everyone to have our curriculum. So we worked on that curriculum for several years, and we ran small field experiments. Anya helped a lot here, Sally Sayadoff helped a lot. And there's just a stream of academic papers around check. And in 2014, the results started to look really good. And what I mean by that is, certain surrogates that we were measuring looked really good. In these types of experiments, you're not really after kindergarten readiness per se, but you're after kindergarten readiness so it leads to better high school outcomes, better educational outcomes, and better lives. So you wanna look for, in the short run, in these longitudinal studies, you wanna look for good surrogates. Okay, so we get good surrogates, or at least so to speak, we think they're good surrogates, on the COG side and on the executive function side. Great, that's the academic part. Now comes the slap in the face. So I start to talk to policymakers about scaling my program up. And invariably, I got some sort of response like this. "John, your program looks great, but don't expect it to happen at scale." I say, "Why?" And typically, there's some sort of hemming and hawing around, it just doesn't seem to have a silver bullet. And at that point, I'd been doing, you all know, I've been doing field experiments since the early 90s, and I've never been met with, "Your program doesn't have the silver bullet," 'cause I say, "Well, look at the data." But they say, "No, you know, all the experts tell us your intervention's gonna work, but then when we scale it, it's never close to what they promise." And then I start to say, "Well, why is that the case?" Now, there's a new area that started around 2008 called implementation science. This is, it tends to be psychologists working on issues around fidelity. What I mean by fidelity is, in the original research, you give somebody a red pill, but then when you scale it, you give them a blue pill. And there could be a lot of different reasons why you give the blue pill. It could be political will, it could be constraints at scale, it could be that you just don't believe the red pill will work, okay? So now with this dialogue, a few important things jumped out at me in 2014. One, is it true that when we do something in the small, and we scale it up, that it becomes only a shell of itself in terms of my treatment effect sizes? Did a bunch of exploration in that area, and that's true, okay? That's why I call the book The Voltage Effect. Now, voltage effect, you can have high voltage or voltage drops. This example is about a voltage drop. I found a .2 standard deviation treatment effect in Chicago Heights. I scaled it up, and it was .01 standard deviation treatment effects, okay? That could just about be a law in econo, you know, we have law of demand, law of supply, etc. The voltage effect is pretty close to my look in the data, to be in a law. What happens in the small typically doesn't happen in the large. So now for me, I started to say, this was, this was a sort of come-to-Jesus moment, because I started to think about what I had been doing in my own career, and how I could add economics to this implementation science community and the debate about scaling. Now during that come-to-Jesus moment, I started to think about everything that field experiments have taught us, right? They're powerful. They allow us to go to the field and test economic theory, test behavioral economics. Naturally occurring data can do that too. Field experiments have the unique feature that with some treatments, we can dig a level deeper to figure out the whys behind something. That's why when Uri and I wrote that book, the older book, we called it the Y-axis. Why? Because field experiments allow you to go beyond measurement and to figure out the whys behind something. What in economies we call the mechanisms, or the mediation paths. Now, we also know that field experiments have served to, we just had a great panel, that we learned a lot about how field experiments can help nonprofits or for-profits. That's a booming industry right now. And as you can see, data is really becoming the world's most valuable resource. And as experimental economists, we can play a very important role in that, because we're the masters of generating data. And that's what our comparative advantage actually is, but it's beyond A B, right? It's beyond A B to dig deeper into mediators and moderators, which I'll talk about in a few moments. And then of course, you have speaking to policymakers, we all do that as well. And I'm gonna come back to that, because I think most of the time, papers that I read that say this has policy implications are mostly completely made up. It's something that you've added at the end of your paper because an editor or referee told you to, or you felt that you had to add it because you think it's able to get in a better journal that way. But well, we'll come back to that in a moment. Now, where we are now at this moment, I started to think, is, and it's, it makes sense to start here, is empiricists, we have focused almost exclusively on what's the best way to generate data to show intervention effects. I think the next frontier, and what I hope my book and the rest of the research begins to open up, is from the very beginning, we say, "Can that idea or policy scale?" Now, when I say "scale," it's part of generalizability or external validity. And then we can say, "What is the science behind that expectation?" Now, you can then ask the question, "Well, as a researcher, if I, everyone wants to do bullet point two, right? We wanna change the world. We also wanna do one, because we wanna learn about mechanisms and intervention effects, so we can change the world." But then the question is, "How should my initial research approach change if I have scaling in mind from the very beginning?" Okay, that's what we're gonna talk about the rest of the lecture. Now, where we started, is we started by creating economic theory. And when you think about, who are the actors in the development and scaling of a program? There are really five major actors: researchers, participants, policymakers, funders, and practitioners. And in our theory, we basically set up a game theoretic approach to how these actors interact. And I saw Jason is on here. Jason's doing a paper right now on this very issue to do more formal modeling above and beyond the paper that I'll show you in a moment. The idea is, let's create theory and try to figure out what are the underlying incentives in our field, or in science more generally, that might lead to a voltage effect? And we do have some pretty nefarious incentives in our system that when you look at them, you say, "Wow, that incentive is really what leads to a voltage effect." Now, just a few accessible papers. The first one, you can see with Omar. Omar is a pioneer in this area. Dana happens to be my partner, she's a surgeon. The first paper is, you know, what can we learn scalability? The second paper is a JEP paper, where we're learning from the medical literature. Medical literature has this problem in spades, and a lot of times, what they're facing is medication adherence. That's what we call the uptake problem. This third paper is where, let's say, most of the good theory is, and that's the science of using science. It just came out in International Economic Review. And then the fourth paper is kind of for the policy types. We talk about the economic model as the first paper in the special issue, and then there are roughly eight or 10 people who comment on our economic model. Some are from implementation science literature, some are from sociology, some from psychology, some from statistics, some from economics, okay? So there, we give 12 proposals from our economic model of scaling. These are places where if you want to dig into the academic literature on what we have done, these are probably useful places to start in this, in this area. Okay, so when I went over that vignette, I said, "There are several premises in what the policymaker is saying." One was, "In the small is different than in the large." What they also said was, "It's a silver bullet problem." My thesis in The Voltage Effect book is that this is not a silver bullet problem. They were correct about the voltage effect, they were incorrect about the silver bullet problem. In fact, it's the opposite. It's a weakest link problem, okay? And in the book, I talk about five vital signs that an idea has to have before you can have confidence in scaling, okay? So that's really the front side of the book, and it talks about idea generation, and how we should think about scaling or generalizing, and how we can use science and data to figure out what are the best ideas. Now, the back half of the book talks about what I call four little behavioral economic secrets, and these are things like, "Why don't we quit enough?" And how to think about marginal thoughts and marginal thinking within organizations, non-pecuniary versus pecuniary incentives, and how we can use framing. There's also a chapter on culture, and how an organization should think about not only measuring culture, but also putting together a culture that works. So there's a bunch of research there on the gender pay gap, on how to think about using field experiments to generate a diverse work pool or diverse applicant pool, and how that maps into a more productive setting, okay? So that's, that's the book in a nutshell here. But what I wanna do is, I wanna dig into one particular vital sign that I think we all have a vested interest in, and that's, "Is the situation representative?" Now, what I mean by that is, you have to think about, in this particular vital sign, both horizontal scaling and vertical scaling. Horizontal scaling is what people typically call external validity. So my program worked in Chicago Heights. With Chicago Heights kids and with Chicago Heights families, will it work in New York? Will it work in Minneapolis? Will it work in LA? Will it work in Denver? Typically, what we mean when we say external validity, a lot of times, we talk about to other populations of kids, or families in this example. That's horizontal scaling. Vertical scaling is when you wanna scale in the same input market, okay? Now, the way I want you to think about this is that, in Chicago Heights, I had to hire 30 teachers. I had to hire 30 teachers. The problem is very different if in the same input market, say around Chicago, I had to hire 30,000 teachers. So in my original research, I want to explore, first of all, are teachers important? Is that an important input? And if so, is this a program that can scale? If I have to hire 30,000 good teachers from the same input market? Invariably, as I point out here, and I talk about this in the book, humans don't scale. So if you have a good idea that relies on a unique human, won't scale. What you need to do is pivot or call an audible and figure out the program that can work with marginal teachers. And then that's what's scalable. Okay, so here's really what I'm saying. As experimentalists, we typically block, right? When you look, when you look at Fisher's work, remember Fisher's tripod? He talked about randomization, right? He and Jersey Nyman really deserve the bulk of credit for innovating along the notion of you should randomize, right? Jersey Nyman was really writing down the potential outcomes model that our intuition is all based on back in the twenties and thirties, when he was talking about potential yields. Same thing is a potential outcomes model that Don Rubin has now made famous. He also talked about replication. We are beginning to go through a replication revolution, and that's a good thing. I'm starting, as Julio said, I'm the editor of, one of the editors of the JPE. I'm also starting a new journal called the Journal of Political Economy Micro. And we'll be looking for good replications. Because in our field, typically when you try to replicate somebody else's work, you initially make an enemy. And then you also produce a paper that's very difficult to place in a good journal. Those incentives are not aligned to augment and learn about science. Whereas think about the hard sciences. The original exploration gets published in Science. And the first replication also gets published in Science or Nature. There's a lot of incentive for that. We don't have that in our field and we need to change that. Okay, so Fisher also talked about replication. He also talked about blocking. And we tend to do that on individual characteristics. And what I mean by that is we say, okay, I'm going to write a pre-analysis plan. And it matters to me whether men and women are affected by treatment in a different way. So I'm going to block on gender. And I'm going to block on gender because I want to make sure I have enough power, not only to explore the treatment effect in aggregate, the average treatment effect, but also the Kate, the conditional average treatment effect, whether men are different from women. And we do that a lot of cases, right? Age, race, etc. Great stuff. What we do very rarely is block on situations. So let's think about Chicago Heights. The way I did that program is I hired the schoolteachers, the 30 schoolteachers in the exact same way that Chicago Heights would hire them. That was my initial intuition. I just want to hire exactly like the school district would. It seemed to make sense when I did that design. But if I'm interested in vertically scaling, check. I made a big mistake. Because I should have oversampled marginal teachers. Why? Because when I have to hire 30,000 teachers, I need to know, will my program work with those kinds of teachers? And I'm so thin on the teachers. I have a distribution of teachers, just like any school district does. But at the 10th and 20th percentiles, I don't have many teachers. So I don't know if my program will vertically scale. I do know that teachers are an important part of the program. They're one of the non-negotiables. But I don't know how my results will change across that distribution of quality because I did not set it up that way. What I'm proposing here is that we go beyond what we call evidence-based policy and do policy-based evidence. So what I'm asking for here is understand at scale or in your target setting, what are the imperfections? What are the constraints? What are the various non-negotiables that at scale, you're going to have to meet? And I want you to bring those back to the Petri dish and test them. And then the idea is that we go to tell policymakers, we can say, look, when we scale this, I know there's going to be a teacher issue and there might be a family issue. How to get families into the program? We explored both of those. And this is called causal moderation. And what we find is we still get a lot of voltage, even with these marginal teachers and even with certain family types. That's important because now I've learned a lot about when we scale the program, what it's going to look like at scale. It's really going beyond an efficacy test. We've all sort of been taught, give theory its best shot. Give our idea its best shot. So we get a convenience sample or what have you. And I talk about all this in the book as well. Then we write it up and we move to our next idea. And we forget to tell everyone else that we just ran an efficacy test. Now, in the medical trials, they have that figured out. Because they say, well, before we go further, you're going to do phase one, phase two, phase three. And they're going to look for a lot of moderators and they're also going to look for mediation paths. We don't have that. That's what I'm asking for effectively here is to flip the way we think about research and kick the tires before we go too far. Now, another way to think about constraints is this, this recent paper. And it, it should be public very soon. We presented it at the NBER. Chris Clapp, Michael Price, Alec Brandon, and Robert Medcalf. I'm sure I'm probably forgetting people are co-authors on this work, so they deserve full credit. Think about what happened with smart thermostats. So smart thermostats are this great innovation that you put in your home, this smart thermostat, and it moderates the temperature for you. At night, might turn it down. When you're gone, it might turn it to save energy, etc., etc. The engineers who helped to build this naturally created estimates for how much energy savings the smart thermostats will yield. That's great stuff. But they had to make an assumption about the users of that technology. And the assumption that they made is that the users will be Commander Spock. Now Commander Spock is like Julio and his other colleagues when they ran through the University of Chicago PhD program. These are, these are unswervingly rational agents who at the drop of a hat can solve a second order partial linear differential equation. And they can do everything in their sleep and they never make mistakes. They're like perfect normative economist. Okay, that's not what you're selling this smart thermostat into. So we have mounds and mounds of data on a field experiment that shows really the engineer should have been using people like Homer Simpson, not like Julio. And what I mean by that is you can say, well, what's Homer Simpson? Homer Simpson's like John List. I have one of these in my house and I completely undid the presets. And when you do that, you completely undo all the good stuff that the engineers estimate should happen. So when you scale that up, they did not recognize the ultimate consumer in the constraints, the cognitive constraints that the ultimate consumer would have. So they have a huge voltage drop, right? This is a voltage effect that I talk about in chapter three of the book. Okay, so now let's go ahead and talk about high voltage for you for the last 20 minutes here. And how I think right away you can take, and I'm going to go on one path of the book. You could go on 18 paths if you wanted. I'm going to just choose one path of the book about how we can make your science better. And invariably, all of you in the back of your mind say, look, John, I not only want to change the world, but I want to get published in a journal, in a good journal. That's great, absolutely. That's a super incentive. Okay, so this is what I mentioned at the beginning. What is the Typhon for experimental economists? Now, of course, we all know the Typhon from a great Greek mythology. This is the father of all monsters. And for us, I think that's become external validity. Okay, now just as an example, I have a recent paper on the, on the uber gender pay gap. So we look at mounds and mounds of data. And what we find is that even when you don't have negotiations, even when you don't have discrimination, you have a 7% gender pay gap per hour. And one referee, and this was sort of ubiquitous through the entire line of trying to get this paper published. One referee kind of articulates it as follows. "A second main concern is generalizability. I think this paper falls short of providing a convincing explanation of what can be extrapolated to more traditional labor markets in addition to contexts in which alternative work arrangements are prevalent." So they didn't like the fact that we had eight million observations and that we were learning about one market. And we argued that when you take away discrimination and negotiations, you still have discrimination and that's an insight that we should find of import. They said, no, because it's not generalizable. Okay, so this is not unique. When I look at the papers I handle, the JP, and I've been doing it for about three years now, nine of 10 experimental studies received that comment either in the referee reports or in the letter to me. Okay, so this is a real issue. Now, I'm going to take kind of a hard stand here and say, if we want to stop all empiricism in top journals, we should continue with this absent-minded complaining about the issue. If you have a real theoretical argument about why it's not externally valid, it's great. But it's literally, hey, it doesn't generalize to other settings, reject. We need more thoughtfulness around this. Why? Because as experimenters, we are especially susceptible. Why? Because we have identification figured out, right? Our four exclusion assumptions aren't so severe. They're not like conditional independence or orthogonality or IV exclusion restrictions. Ours are much more believable. So the identification is not the place where you have the war. Our war tends to be along the lines of external validity. Even though, of course, you could make the same arguments with naturally occurring data. Now, the bottom line truth is every empirical study can be rejected based on that complaint. Right? Time, situation, and/or space will do you in every time. And that's what I talk about in the external validity trial paper that I sent to everyone, right? I call Raj to the stand, I call Rebecca to the stand. And Raj says, well, look, I have IRS data from 2008 to 2016. And the prosecutor says, voila, Donald Trump has come into power and the world is different from when you analyze data. We can't learn anything from your data set. Time can do you in every time. Okay? Now, I don't think we do a good job of tackling it ourselves. And this issue has come up more and more through the years. I mean, this, this goes all the way back to Mill. Campbell and Stanley talked about it. Brunswick talked about it in psychology. Because economists, we've talked about it. We need to, from the start, put our argument for why this result, either we shouldn't be concerned with external validity. And it's from that paper is what I call a wave one study. But if it's beyond a wave one study, we want to take the matter into our own hands, which I talk about in this paper. Now, this is what I call the author, Onis Pramandi. Much like at the beginning of our papers, we talk about our randomization and how it's credible. We need to do the same thing with EV. Now, the economic approach that I advocate to EV has four reporting areas that give insights. It's really about preferences, beliefs, and constraints. And how those might vary across populations of people, setting, situations, and time. Right, that's the theory of the idea of generalization. Now, our papers, I argue from the start, if we report those four conditions, we put the burden of proof on the other person. But more importantly, we begin the discussion using science and using economic theory. Economic theory tells us, for example, how to interpret data from a demand-supply system. Generalizability should be no different. Theory should tell us how to interpret data from different settings. Now, one example of this is of like how, how I would like people to do it. This comes from a paper with some co-authors. This is a whole set all paper and it's titled $100 million nudge. So we've simply created two paragraphs. First, in terms of select, you can say, well, what's the sans condition? One is selection, two is attrition. And attrition is one of our assumptions that we make for an internally valid estimate. Third is naturalness of the context. And fourth is about scaling. And at the end, we say, down here, you know, we view our firm size result is a, is a wave one insight. Now, those should not be subject to the external validity critique as much as wave two and wave three insights. These are basic insights that if we just find them, it's important. Whether it's a particular population or situation, it's important, like basic science. Okay? Now, I want each of you to ask, and this is, when we think about how to generate our data and where to generate our data, I think an external validity litmus test is important. Can you confidently say that it's difficult or impossible to find a better setting than the one that you are using? Say that. Most critics view uniqueness as a negative distraction. It's not right. It's the opposite. If you have a unique setting, that setting in and of itself allows us to test something that common settings don't allow. And in that way, that's the perfect domain. It's giving me some natural variation that I can go in and overlay randomization that allows me to look at a question or an idea or a program that no other setting would allow. That should be congratulated, not scorned. Now, some thoughts on the way I see papers written. Usually it goes as follows. I just found a really neat result. And then you tack on a theory at the end because that's what the journal wants. Okay, that hardly ever works, right? Because then you get the criticism that the theory and data aren't speaking to one another. And then typically for extra credit, you tack on a few paragraphs that say, I'm going to make something up for why policymakers should care. Okay, again, I don't think that's a great strategy. What I want is from the very beginning, you think about the theory and the policy link. And then you can make statements about, here's how I thought of EV. And here's how it was in my design. Okay, so let's think about it a few different ways. One, think about conditional average treatment effects. What I talked about before is that when we block on humans, we then produce Kate's. We know how to do that. We should do the exact same thing, develop Kate's around important theoretical or practical situations. And then that's what you vary in your experimental design. And you're producing a conditional average treatment effect on the dimension of the situation. Okay, so this might feel ambiguous, but let's think about elasticity of demand. So we have this paper, Ariel Goldschmidt, Carrie Smith, Rob Medcalf, Ian Moore, Jenny Wang. We wrote this paper. We wrote this paper that's titled "The Value of Time Across America." And we do a nationwide natural field experiment to figure out the value of time. When we do that, we need two elasticities pretty much. We need two comparative statics. One is we need the price elasticity of demand, and two is we need the time elasticity. The ratio of those two, when you have weak complementarity, gives you the value of time. It's kind of neat. Okay, so if you'd say, "Well, look, I want to know if my price elasticity of demand can transfer to other settings." Makes sense. Economic theory tells you where to look, right? Closeness of substitutes, budget share, is it short run or long run? Those are three things you're gonna find in every principles book. Now, those are features. If I can vary closeness of substitutes, or I have the natural variation in the data, that's something that when I generalize, I say, "Look, I found the elasticity of demand of 0.4 in this market, but if I try to transfer that to another market, I know it's gonna have many, many more available substitutes, so I know the price elasticity of demand's gonna go up, and I might have some close-form solution about it goes to 0.7 because of these features in my original data." The theory tells you the features that you can vary, or at least that you should think about if you want to generalize to different settings from your experimental setting. Okay, so a lot of times when I tell people, "Block on situations," they say, "Well, List, you have a dimensionality problem. We don't know which situations to block on. I'm giving you, in this case, it's clear." Now, you can say, "Well, what about other cases?" That's where Levitt and I were going in that Journal of Economic Perspectives paper. Back then, in the early 2000s, our literature was all about going to the lab and measuring social preferences. What we argue in that paper is, "Well, wait a second. There are certain moderators in the lab." We talked about selection, we talked about wealth, we talked about social norms of giving, we talked about anonymity. Those were our features in our theory that said, "If you change those dials, you should systematically change the measure of social preferences." So we question whether you should be generalizing whole cloth, the empirical estimates from the lab to the field. So we had predictions. That gives you predictions about if you want to go from one setting to another. We have four features that you should look at. What are the differences between your target setting and your experimental setting on those features? And then, can you test those in your original experiment? Yes, you can. You can vary anonymity. You can vary the stakes. Social norms are a little bit difficult to vary, but you get the point, okay? So to conclude, you know, we've become a legitimate part of the social sciences using experimentation. No doubt about that. And this is in large part thanks to the pioneers of lab experiments, Vernon Smith, Charlie Plot, others who were working very hard in the 50s and 60s, 70s, and 80s, all the way up to fight and claw to make experiments a legitimate part of economics beyond the social sciences. Now, in the last several decades, all of us have made the fight for field experiments deserve a place at the table. I think we've done a good job with that. Now, where I think we're failing is that we will never realize the full benefits of our experiments, field experiments or lab, if we don't come to grips with understanding the science of using science. Early on, I talked about, you know, a lot of times we think the pearl's before the swine. And what I meant by that is, the original innovation, right? That's the great stuff. That's the pearls. And then, wow, the implementation and all that stuff, that's the swine. That's great when you're trying to fight and learn about mechanisms and test theory and get tenure. But if you truly want to produce ideas that can scale and can change the world, that's the exact wrong way to think about it, right? This is policy-based evidence approach, not evidence-based policy. I'm gonna conclude by saying, "May the voltage be with you." And I will announce the winners. Hopefully, my guy behind the screen will have given me some results. It looks like we have them, which is awesome. Wow, so this is a record. This is a record. The target that you wanted to shoot for was 12. So, wow. I think that the previous record was at MIT when I did this, it was like 17. So the winner here is Antonio Iro. Antonio, can you show us your face?
He's a Jilly RA.
Oh, Jilly RA, I like it. So this isn't cooked. Antonio, congratulations. If you're on, show your face. We want to give you a big congratulations.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I'm here.
Very good, Antonio. Very good.
Very exciting.
All right, all right. And the equilibrium, of course, is one. And I'm gonna, there are a lot of people who got the equilibrium. And the winner, I'm gonna butcher the name, Niruddin Ikramov? Niruddin, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Congratulations, Niruddin.
You know, incidentally, I think Professor Thaler ran this game for his readers at The Guardian, and the result was 11, I believe.
Oh, it was? So Dick had a game that beat mine. Now, I'm gonna claim that that was because it was long run. And when you run it in The Guardian, you have time to think and maybe go on the internet and search, et cetera. What do you think?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, very good. So where are you located?
California, Sacramento.
Oh, very good. I'm gonna come out to give a book talk, I think, and, no, that's San Jose, in, I think, a few months. So congratulations, my person behind the screen will be sending you an email asking you for what you want on the inscription, okay?
Thank you.
All right, so let me stop sharing here. And, oh, wow. This is one of the first times I've ever been on time. It's exactly nine o'clock Chicago time. So I'd love to take any questions that you have. I hope some of the things that I talked about are somewhat unique for you. As you saw, the first half was the book. And the second half, I created from, in part, from some slides that I've made on some editors' panels that I've been on, but in part, several new slides that I'm thinking about one way to use the book for all the scholars in their initial experimental design. So while you're formulating, if anybody has a question, go ahead. Otherwise, I can talk a little bit about the beauty contest game. But I want to turn it over to questions before I can take over that. I might be off the hook, huh? No questions at all. This could be... I don't know if people can, Carolina, can people unmute themselves and talk? Yeah, so just go ahead and raise your hand, anyone. It doesn't need to be about this lecture. It can be about anything. Go ahead, Ryan.
How often do you think the issue is the experimenter themselves? And like, how do you deal with the trade-off where the experimenter wants to generate a large treatment effect because they want something that will publish and do well? And so they have incentives to heavily oversee the experiment and, you know, check in on the teachers as often as possible, or whatever your contact is. How do you kind of deal with the trade-off where, especially as a young researcher, you want something that's gonna be publishable, but you also obviously want something that would scale and help people as well?
No, Ryan, you're right. And we point that out, that's that's the first part of the Voltage Effect book. It's actually chapter one. And in the theory, we model it as in the researcher's objective function has two components. One component is the replication probability. We all want to produce results that replicate. That's good stuff. The other component of that objective function is we also want to create results that have big treatment effects. And we want big treatment effects because it gets in better journals. We get more grant money, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the voltage effect in part comes from when researchers don't place 100% of the weight on the replication component. Okay, so now you say, "Well, how could that be?" Well, researchers in our model know more about the Xs of the subjects than the government does. So researchers know, for example, how to set up the incentives or the types of things they should do to get the sample that they want. And then, because they know the Xs, this is a conditional average treatment effect type of story, they tend to oversample those types, okay? That's the dubious part. Now, the non-dubious part is, a lot of times, we just issue, "Come into my study, and you'll get a participation fee." But like in a drug sample or in a program, like a Chicago Heights Early Childhood Program, who's the first in line? The people who in expectations think they're gonna get the most from the program. So even if the researcher places 100% on replication, if they're just trying to maximize N, subject to a budget constraint, they're gonna want to lower the participation fee as much as possible because that's how I get a larger N. And then, just by mistake, by sorting, people who sort in first have the largest treatment effects. Those are the two channels that I think our system sets up that lead to, one's nefarious, one's not nefarious, but they both lead to voltage drops in the sample. Now, the other part of the chapter, I talk about dupers. And I talk about Elizabeth Holmes and what she did at Theranos. And I talk about Brian Wonsnick at Cornell. And I talk about how the incentives in many settings are aligned for that kind of behavior too. And that's how I wheeled out replication and the importance of thinking about replication in a way to update and how to think about checking the dupers and also checking the people who might not be placing full weight on replication. Okay, Ryan? So yeah, that's digging a little bit into chapter one of the voltage effect. But thank you. You're exactly right. Okay, I think Andrea was next, and then Lou, I'm gonna come to you, okay?
Okay, so hello. I have one, I would like to push a little bit on one idea, and maybe I misunderstood it. But my understanding with the idea of the teachers is that there's a distribution of teachers. Some of them are really good, but you will probably get teachers, access to teachers who are in lower percentages. And my understanding is that you assume if you initially hired a low-quality, the marginal teachers, that will scale better. But then, the assumption there is that the marginal teachers for that specific intervention, relative to them, the better teachers will do better. And I would like to challenge that assumption because they're...
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second, okay. So just so we're on the same page. My premise is, I want to sample both good teachers and bad teachers in my design because I want to figure out if teachers are a non-negotiable input for my idea. If they are a non-negotiable input, then before I scale it, I want to make sure that that input is available. If they're not an important input, or let's say they are an important input and it's not available, I want to change my curriculum in certain ways to where the curriculum matches with the teachers I can hire, so then that can scale. That's my conjecture, is that's what I call policy-based evidence. So within that, what are you challenging?
I was thinking that you think that the better teachers will do better in every different aspect in your program relative to the marginal teacher. And I could imagine a program for the marginal teacher.
Absolutely. There are multiple dimensions, multiple dimensions. I'm taking a stand on, let's say I have two outcome metrics that I care about, COG standardized scores and non-COG scores. And I find across the board that really good teachers are good at both, and bad teachers are bad at both. And if I want to scale that output, but of course, it might have five dimensions. And some teachers are good at two and not good at the other three. That's a different question now, isn't it? Because, but it's the same issue that I face is I have to have some way to collapse that into a decision rule about teachers who I want to hire. So if I collapse that and I have teachers that are all marginal who I want to hire, great. That's a program that I want. But if I collapse that and it amounts to teachers that I can't hire, I'm back in my problem, okay? Does that make sense, Andrea?
Yes, it does. I was worried that you're making this assumption that everything will work better for the teachers, for the higher teachers and...
No, you're right. You're right. If I said that, I misspoke. I was trying to show that as an example, but thanks, Andrea. You're exactly right. Your point's right. Is that, and this is kind of an overarching point, and it's a good one that you're making. Make sure you understand your outcome metrics. If you have multiple outcome metrics, I'm gonna urge you to correct for MHT. But that was a different keynote talk that I gave back in Tucson, right? When it would have been Esther and David and I wrote the paper titled like, "A Dozen Things I Wish Experimental Economists Should Do More Of." I see David on here. David, you should show yourself and take credit for this because you worked very hard on this paper. One of those was correct for MHT, so you're right. I have multiple outcome metrics. Now, what I want to do is I want to collapse that and figuring out what do I want for inputs? 100%.
Thank you.
Hey, David. Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, I was curious, John, what do you think in terms of, so how much do we need endorsement from the top, where the top is like editors, to have this revolution? Like, I'm thinking about like a scholar who would like to correct for multiple hypothesis testing, but then it's like, "Ha, not all my results." So if he has John List as an editor, he will be praised and will get brownie points. But if he has a different editor, he might, you know, open an edge for a referee or the editor himself to say, "Ha, you see, your results are not robust." I was curious about that.
No, I hear you. I hear you. So the way I always think about this is, am I creating something that my future self will be proud of? Or when some guy ends up producing a code that goes through everyone's papers and says, "You know, these 100 AER papers, they all reported significance, but when I corrected for MHT, 99 of them, their results went away." And then puts your name, Butera et al., YMCA, paper up on a board. I don't think your future self will be very happy. So I think on the one hand, you want to make your future self happy, and that's basically saying, "Do what science tells you to do." Do it in a robustness test. You know, present results and then say, "But if we correct in this particular way, here's what happens." But in the end, you're gonna want correct standard errors. We know that. And we know that that is gonna come to pay soon. You can see it coming, right? That freight train is coming. Now, I think the more general question about, think about the external validity trial that I presented. That's less about a standard error, and it's more about art, right? So what I'm saying is, take the bulls by the horn and say, "Here's why my result either shouldn't be worried about external validity or I'm gonna take matters into my own hands and use science to talk about external validity." So that's like a no-brainer, and I think MHT is too, if you consider your future self's welfare. But because in the end, the right science will win. It happens every time. Sometimes it just takes more time than you anticipate, but it will. It will win in the end. Okay, are there any other, we have a few more moments. Are there any other questions? Now, where I thought you were going, Lou, was in part, is this revolution about doing sub-treatments on the situations. Look, we all have to decide where to place our bets on the sub-treatments, on the Ys. And what I'm saying is, continue to do mechanisms. Continue to explore mediators. That's important. But I'm also saying is alongside those, if you can also add moderation and moderators, together, those two are going to unlock secrets about external validity that we will want. So what I'm saying is alongside, here are my three treatments to show you... to show you why this is a mechanism at work, and my theory is right. Okay, so at once, what you've done here is you've done internal validity, and you've done what I would call trying to take care of type 3 errors. And that's, "I'm interpreting my data correctly." That's really what you're trying to do, is you're trying to use data to figure out what is the mechanism. What I'm also arguing for here is, that's great, but also use data to figure out what are the moderators, and if those moderators are different from your setting to target settings, you can give some data on how your results will change. Now, I'm golden because I'm telling you, if you don't think I'm externally valid, I've thought about that. And these two things are different than other settings, and I've tested those in my original design. And here's what I have. I'm glad JD came on here because JD has a great paper. John Davis has a great paper on scaling that uses that with teachers. And he shows how to do it. So, that's exactly what I'm proposing here. That's... I'm asking for some more sub-treatments. And I'm asking now for causal moderation, because remember, when you have moderators that you're not experimentally varying, you should not be making causal statements around those. Right? But we always do. Being a man causes this, being a woman causes this, being old causes that, being white causes that. Can't do that. That's reduced form. There's probably another variable that's correlated with that, that's varying. And I talk about that in the book in chapter four. So, I'm talking about causal moderation, okay? Lou, go ahead, did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I was just curious, sort of a provocative question. So, if you had to choose for, given a fixed budget, to go for a way more detailed paper on mechanisms, so devote a lot of resources to vary treatments to address mechanism versus, you know, lose a little bit of precision on that and gain a little bit more insight on the things you talked about, like, think about a survey and non-response bias, where you vary the incentives for taking the survey. Where would you go? Do you see a trade-off there?
Yeah, great question. No, great question. I think for me, it all depends on what wave we're in. So, at the end of that external validity trial paper, I talk about wave 1, wave 2, wave 3 research. If we're in wave 1, I do wanna spend more of my resources on measurement and mechanisms. And that's the basic science of it. I wanna determine the internal validity in the operation because, let's face it, there's no external validity if you don't have internal validity. Right? There's no use talking about external validity. You have to have internal validity. So, I think it should be determined by the wave that you're in. If you're in wave 1, I wanna move more that way. If I'm in other waves, I'm like a second or third generation paper, I wanna be looking at causal moderation and boundary conditions, and doing those things in a randomized and systematic way where I'm measuring internally valid estimates of those Xs.
So, there is a sense in which we could pick old questions and go back, and there's a sort of a new market for saying, like, we nailed down that mechanism.
Yeah.
Now, let's run more experiments to see...
100%.
Yeah, that's really cool.
100%. And that's what we should be doing because, you know, we're partly doing that on one dimension, that's replication. But that's not what I'm talking about here. The replication is to try to figure out if it was a false positive or not. I'm saying, yeah, go to those studies. There's a wealth of information out there. And then, do some causal moderation around that. And that should be an entire research agenda because it helps us learn the wheres, whens of where that result applies. There are all kinds of results locked up in academic journals. Part of it is because people don't believe that they generalize from that setting. The other part of it is because people have just moved on, and they're writing other papers. So, I think you're exactly right, that that could be an entire 100-person research agenda that would actually be very fruitful and very scientific and very systematic.
Well, thank you so much, John. And congratulations again to Nadine, and to our great Antonio from Gile.
Exactly, exactly.
And well, and thank you, everybody, for participating in the session. And it was really a great session, and thank you again, John. And now, we continue with the activity. And we also have in the afternoon, Robert Metcalfe. I got it right this time? Okay, so, see you, let's continue.
Thanks so much, Holly. Thanks, everyone, thanks for coming, and thanks for your great questions. It was great seeing everyone, stay safe. Bye-bye.